But she didn't like pin me down.
She'd bring in a cage.
Yeah, but then. I don't know.
Crash around two o'clock.
Oh, my God.
A little low bar. Hey, how are you?
How are you?
I'm great. I'm not great. I'm pretty good.
Okay, okay.
Great's achievable, but not every day.
Okay, that's, I mean, mine was all sarcastic, but if, I mean.
The me and you were probably in the same.
Okay, okay, there we go. There we go.
We just got there two different ways.
Exactly. Yeah, I'm trying, yeah.
You sure you went in here? Everybody with a mozzles tonight?
I haven't had a chance to go in there and see. Just by reading that email again, because she isn't, I mean, I don't think she. I did, I mean, I sent her the Zoom, but I think she sent that email right around the same time, so she probably doesn't. She's supposed to be. She had Dana helping her, so he's here, so it must be.
You're the bridge enforcer? Don't laugh at it. How'd that get to you? I think I made a couple friends up there, maybe. They didn't throw me off the bridge. That aren't ticking.
It's lay, I don't know if it's knee, I think it's more. And in your toes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Alan Joins, Mayor of Winston-Salem. It's my pleasure to welcome you to this December 1st meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council, and would ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Joyner.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Andrew Bowen.
Here.
Councilmember Cipio. Mayor Protem Adams. Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Hall.
Present.
And Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Cipio is joining us by Zoom, and I think Mayor Protem is not going to join us by Zoom, so, all right. Thank you very much. Would you please join the city councilme in a moment of silence? Thank you so much. Will you join the city councilme in a pledge of allegiance?
In the pledge of.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Our sergeant-at-arms tonight is Lieutenant Barry Martin. Thank you for being with us tonight. And our fire marshal is Micah Budford. Thank you for being with us as well. Tonight's meeting is being televised live on TV 13, and it will be replayed Tuesday, tomorrow, at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday night at 9:00 p.m. Of course, actually, no copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings are always available online on the city's website, and you just go on there and click on "Watch Meeting Online" option. I'd like to recognize our city manager, Mr. Page, for his update.
Thank you, Your Honor. A few items tonight. First, some real positive news. The Federal Transit Authority announced that the city of Winston-Salem was awarded just a little more than $5 million to the FTA's FYI-25 Low or No Emissions Program, which helps support transit agencies in buying and rehabilitating buses, vans, and building bus maintenance facilities. This marks the second straight year that DOT and WISTA have crafted a successful grant application for bus replacements, so we're excited about that. That's ongoing. A second item related to on-street parking. I think it's well-known now that we have allowed for free on-street parking in the downtown Winston-Salem areas for the holidays, which started on November 27th, right, Thanksgiving, or run through January 2nd. This applies to on-street spaces, not to city-on-parking decks or surface lots, which city lots maintain a $1 per hour rate. There are many, many private lots out there, so you have to pay attention to whose lot you're parking in. If you're parking in the free spots in the on-street parking, we do ask folks to limit their stay to a few hours, so that allows free access for these parking spaces for as many visitors as possible into our downtown area. Again, the privately-owned and managed private parking lots and parking decks operate according to their own standard rates and terms. The city will still be diligently enforcing regulations related to loading zones, fire hydrant areas, and parking on the incorrect sides of the curbs, so follow the standard guidelines for parking when you're visiting downtown, and we encourage folks to visit our vibrant local shops and restaurants during the holiday season, and we hope this makes their parking experience just a little more convenient during this timeframe, and they can contact CityLink 311 if they need more information. As I typically get asked, we are continuing on our market compensation and benefits study, and we expect to have some information back for counsel on the fire department portion of that at your committee meetings this month. Loose-leap collections are currently finishing work in Quadrant 4. Once crews complete Quadrant 4, all the crews will move to Quadrant 3 and continue there until it's finished. That's the area that hasn't been collected one full pass yet. Depending on weather conditions and equipment availability, we hope to complete that pass by Friday, so that everybody will have had one collection in front of their homes. I know council doesn't need to know this, but just as a reminder, the Ambassador Holiday Parade and our tree lighting events are upcoming this week. The Holiday Parade starts at 5:00 p.m. at Fourth and Poplar Streets, and the city tree lighting ceremony will be at Corbining Plaza, which is 231 West First Street, immediately following the parade at approximately 6:30. We know that's a great time, and a lot of people enjoy starting off the holiday season with those two events, so we're looking forward to having everybody come out for those. We are accepting nominations for the 2026 MLK Junior Young Dreamers Award, which are due by December 12, 2025. This opportunity nominates someone that has made a difference for those who may have otherwise been overlooked, ignored, or disadvantaged. The Winston-Salem Human Relations Commission annually awards two people aged 18 to 40 as the part of the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Young Dreamers Award. Specific examples that they've excited for activities that are awarded for include fostering positive race relations, vocalizing or acting against injustice, leading inclusive efforts, embracing those who are perceived as different, and celebrating religious diversity. The nominations can be found on our website, the city of Winston-Salem Human Relations webpage on our website. And then, as one recognition tonight, Beth Hundley, who's standing by here, I'll ask her to stand up, has started work as the city's assistant to the city manager. In this role, she'll be working across the organization on strategic priorities, resident concerns, council communication, and a variety of special projects. She comes to us from Virginia Beach, where she serves as the deputy director of the Cultural Affairs Department. She's also worked for the U.S. Navy, Virginia Beach City Manager's Office, Old Dominion University, and Henrico County, Virginia, amongst some other ones. She's also worked with a variety of nonprofits and has also worked as a journalist. She holds a bachelor's degree in communications from Mary Crest College and a master's degree in public administration from Old Dominion University, so we're excited to have Beth on board. She started just last week, so she's just trying to get her feet wet right now and to know what's going on. So with that, we'll stand ready to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Page tonight? Thank you, and Beth, welcome. Glad to, we look forward to working with you there. All right, tonight's agenda, as you know, is comprised of two parts, the general agenda and the consent agenda. It's always the practice of this council to take the consent agenda as the first order of business. Items on this agenda have been unanimously recommended by a committee of the council or are being submitted in established city procedure there. There'll be no discussion of the items individually unless a council member so requests, at which time the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered individually. Items not removed from the consent agenda will be enacted with one motion. Councilmembers, are there any items you wish to pull? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Clark, second by Councilmember Hall to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. And Councilmember Cipio votes aye. Thumbs up. All right, now we'll move to the general agenda, which includes an ordinance on a city park's code of conduct. There's a public hearing on an annexation agreement, a public hearing on a UDO text amendment, there are four zoning public hearings, as well as a public hearing on the Civil Service Board appeals hearing rules, as well as a resolution for sidewalk easements. When these public hearings are called, persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. If there's opposition to a public hearing item, the proponents and opponents will each be given 15 minutes for presentation and three minutes for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing, and the city council will consider the item. May we have item G1, please?
Item G1, ordinance amending Chapter 38 of the city code relating to miscellaneous offenses and provisions to establish a city park's code of conduct.
Mr. Al, would you give us just a quick update on this one?
Good evening, Mayor Joins, members of city council. So last month, at the committee of the whole meeting, city staff presented a proposed code of conduct for our city recreation and parks, facilities, and parks in response to challenges that we were experiencing late in the summer with some of our city parks. That code of conduct really kind of follows a model that we established with the Carolina Classic Fair and that we found was effective in encouraging good behavior during the 10 days of the fair, and so the code of conduct that was presented last month kind of followed suit with outlining the types of expectations that the city has in terms of good behavior, but also the prohibited behaviors at city facilities, recreation facilities, and parks. So really, just kind of following up on that, we'll talk a little bit about what our implementation plan is for this code of conduct if the council approves it. So first off, we have 83 parks, probably over 200 signs that would have to be replaced, so it's going to take some time to do that, and so the initial approach to enforcement will be to educate folks who may be in violation or not meeting the standards established in the code of conduct. So our police department, our park ranger, our recreation park staff will be educating folks who identify as perhaps not complying with the code of conduct, and that'll continue until we have the signs in place. In the meantime, we will be looking to install signs following the data that we had presented to you all in terms of the calls for service that we were experiencing at some of our parks, and so if you recall that list, Marshall Park, Washington Park, and Granville Park were at the top of that list, so we will kind of follow that data in terms of priorities for installing the new code of conduct signage, and once that signage is in place, then the police department will proceed in enforcing the code of conduct. However, your ordinances are in place where certain activity is criminal, and the police department will enforce those particular ordinances that are already on the books, so to speak. So that's kind of the plan. Our hope is to have some initial signage in place in those parks that I just mentioned, probably sometime after the beginning of the new year, and then hopefully have all the signage in place in the late spring before our rental season starts up for our park shelters and those facilities. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Al. Any questions, Mr. Al? All right, thank you. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Hall for a motion, and she's ready, please.
Thank you, Mayor Joins. I move for approval of item G1.
A second.
Second by Councilmember Joyner. Discussion, Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Joins. I'd like to say that I appreciate staff for their work and their commitment in putting things together, also in listening to committee members, and then also discussion that we had at committee of the whole to make sure that the concerns that we had as council members, but also the concerns that were lifted by residents and other constituents throughout all of the wards were listened to, and we appreciate you all taking that feedback back and then presenting something back to us that was a bit more reflective of what we heard in our respective communities. I've mentioned this to some constituents before, but I think that this is not necessarily something that is into everything or something that's going to be amazing for everyone. I think that it is certainly a start for what we want to see in our parks and being able to get some new wording in place for this ordinance, and I would ask for constituents to make sure that they keep that in mind, that this is a starting place and a starting point, and hope that everyone does realize that we try to at least hear the concerns that you presented and be able to present something that is a bit more reflective, and that is why I am supporting this tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Andre Bowen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Al, thank you for what you presented tonight. It's a, kind of seeing the progression from October to now has been moving to me. Very excited to see how this works. A handful of emails that I've received in the past couple months is always looking around Marshall Park and the hours around that, kind of having attraction to downtown, allowing that to be open a little bit past the sunset time. I can understand the other parks, but that was one concern that I had, but just overall, appreciate the work that went into this and also a lot of the stuff that we have moving forward with our unhoused population, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Joins. And to your point, Councilmember Andrew Bowen, I think that this came up in one of the community meetings, ACM-Raw, that we went to, particularly with Marshall Park, because it's one of those parks that does not necessarily have a gate that can open and close it, so it's not necessarily one that you can totally close and put a latch on at sunset, but I think we did kind of address that, or that did come up in one of the conversations, so if that is something that you can speak to, if that's okay, Mayor Joins.
Mr. Al, you want to comment on that?
Yes, sir. So I did fail to note that also part of this action is establishing new operating hours, which would run from sunrise to sunset. I think in terms of, you know, looking at Marshall Park, I mean, it is an area where people walk through in the evenings as they enjoy downtown, and I think that it would be treated as such, as opposed to stopping people who may be just walking through Marshall Park to go from one section of downtown to the other, so I think that that's kind of what we're looking at.
Do we have a motion on the floor? All those who favor the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. That is unanimous, and Councilmember Cipio voted yes. Thank you. All right, item G2?
Item G2, public hearing in consideration of the proposed annexation agreement between the Village of Clemens and the city of Winston-Salem pursuant to NCGS 160A-58.24.
Mr. Murphy, can you give us just a quick comment on this item, please?
Yes. Good evening, mayor, members of council. This is an item, some years ago, back in, I believe, the 90s, there were some annexation agreements with all of our respective towns, the Village of Clemens, that have since expired. The Village of Clemens reached out, and they were interested in having an annexation agreement to just make it clear who can and who cannot annex in areas along the border. Generally speaking, most annexations today are done voluntarily, but this does at least set the stage for the folks that live in that area to know if they want to annex, who they would go to. This is not in any way setting up for involuntary annexation, because that essentially is not something that can be accomplished under the statutes.
Any questions, Mr. Murphy? Thank you, Mr. Murphy. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who'd like to be heard on this proposed annexation agreement with the town of Clemens? All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and this typically would come from the Public Works Committee, so I'll call on our chairman, the Public Works Committee, Councilmember Burke.
Thank you, mayor. I move for approval of item G2.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Taylor. Any discussion? If not, all those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, and Councilmember Cipio votes yes. Thank you. Item G3?
Item G3, public hearing in consideration of text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinances, UDO CC31, to update references to the city-county comprehensive plan, Forward 2045.
Mr. Murphy, this is a little bit of housekeeping here, if you could comment on that for us?
Thank you again. Yes, this is, UDO CC31 is essentially a cleanup whenever the council adopted Forward 2045 back in the fall of 2024. In the adopting resolution, we had some language that basically said, "All places where the comp plan is referred to as legacy, it shall be known as Forward 2045", and the reason why we did it like that is because we were waiting on the county to adopt it before we formally brought through a text amendment. The county adopted Forward 2045 earlier this fall, so as a result, we are now bringing through the text amendment that formally changes all references in the UDO of legacy, Legacy 2030. There's some tweaks with the activity centers and some of that language that's also part of this, but essentially it's a cleanup. All those references now would be Forward 2045, our new comp plan adopted by both the city and the county.
City and county, very good. Any questions, Mr. Murphy? Thank you, Mr. Murphy. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who'd like to be heard on this proposed text amendment for our Unified Development Ordinance? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. I believe Councilmember Joyner has a motion.
Thank you, mayor. I move for approval of the statement of consistency for approval of this item and UDO CC31.
Second.
Thank you. Second by Councilmember Hall. Any further discussion? If not, all those who favor the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, and Councilmember Cipio votes yes. Thank you very much. Item G4?
Item G4, public hearing in consideration of zoning petition of Bless AH, Inc., from GBL to GBL, property located west of South Stratford Road between Kimwell Drive and Dinsmore Street, containing approximately .67 acres.
Thank you. Is there anyone in council chamber who is opposed to this proposed rezoning? The proponents are here. Seeing no opposition, I'll recognize Councilmember Andre Bowen for a motion, if he's ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I have a moment before I make the motion?
Absolutely.
A quick thank you to Mr. Murphy for the conversations we've had. This is not the original plan that the people proposed, and they worked with the county and the city to get it to where they could be approved by everybody, so I just appreciate the hard work with staff there. So with that, I say I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for the approval of this item, and, two, W-3666.
Motion to her second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Clark. Any further discussion? If not, all those who favor the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, and that's unanimous. Councilmember Cipio votes yes. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Andre Bowen. Item G5?
Item G5, public hearing in consideration of zoning petition of Serenity's Properties LLC from RS7 to RSQL, property located at the northwest intersection of East 14th Street and Della Brook Road, containing approximately .82 acres located in the northeast ward.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this proposed rezoning? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. I'd recognize Councilmember Burke.
Thank you again. I move for the approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W-3669.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Clark. Any further discussion, questions on this item? Not all those who favor the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, and Councilmember Cipio votes yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Item G6?
Item G6, public hearing in consideration of zoning petition of BMS Investments Properties LLC from GI to RS7, property located at the northeast intersection of North Glen Avenue and Haynes Avenue, containing approximately .44 acres located in the northeast ward.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who's opposed to this rezoning? Petitioners here, if there's any questions? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and again, I'd recognize Councilmember Burke.
Thank you. I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W-3670.
Sir, second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Clark. Any further discussion, questions? If not, all those who favor the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, and that is unanimous for Councilmember Cipio voting thumbs up. Item G7?
There's been a request for a excusal.
Yes, we have a motion. I need a motion to excuse Councilmember Taylor from voting on item G... Actually, it'll be G8, according to my.
Mayor, thank you. I'll move for the recrusal of Councilmember Taylor from W-3671.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hall. All those in favor of excusing Councilmember Taylor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Councilmember Taylor, you're excused from voting on that. Now we'll go to item G8.
Item G8, public hearing in consideration of zoning petition of Goldwater Holding LLC, DBA Eagle Properties, from RM8S to LIL, property located at the southwest intersection of Highway 285, US 52, and Arnold Avenue, containing approximately .23 acres located in the southeast ward.
Thank you. Again, is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this proposed rezoning? Petitioners here, if there are any questions? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and again, I'd recognize Councilmember Joyner.
Thank you, mayor. I move for approval of the statement of consistency for the approval of this item and W-3671.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hall. Any further discussion or questions? Any further discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. And that's unanimous for Councilmember Recipio voting yes, and Councilmember Taylor excused. Thank you very much. Item G9.
Item G9, public hearing in consideration of the adoption of the Civil Service Board appeal hearing rules.
Thank you. We do, this is a public hearing. I'm going to ask our city attorney, French, to kind of give us a quick synopsis of where we're at and what we're doing tonight, and then maybe comment on some issues that are related to that.
Thank you, Mayor Jones. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We're here again to talk about our proposed Civil Service Board rules. Before we get into the meat of it, I would ask that you make sure that you refresh your iPads. I know that the clerk made sure that the most recent additions of that were added to the iPads. Two things I wanted to highlight here at the beginning of this conversation. You will see before you, there should be two resolutions. One is to adopt the proposed rules as presented by the Civil Service Board, and the other is to adopt the proposed rules with the legal revisions that we went over with you all during our special meeting back in November. And so tonight, we are here for the public hearing portion of this, which is outlined, excuse me, in our statute. It is your job to go through and review the rules as you've done. Tonight is to hear from, in the public hearing portion of this, if anyone has any comments in opposition or in favor of either the rule, of the rules that have been presented.
And this, this is a quasi-judicial committee or organization, is it?
It is, yes, sir. I can get into that a little bit more once, I don't know if we're doing the public comment periods where we're having anyone speak on behalf of either of those two resolutions. So I can, we can open that up, if you'd like to open the public hearing, and I can take the time to do that there, or however you would like to do that.
Why don't you go ahead and just comment on that particular phase?
Okay. Happy to do that. One of the things that I think is important for us to note at the top of this, when we're doing our discussions about this, these proposed rules, is that the Civil Service Board is a quasi-judicial board. If you look at the statute, the language in one of the sections in indicates specifically that the board decisions shall contain findings of fact and conclusions, and shall be based on competent material and substantial evidence in the record. And the importance of that is, is that the board is limited to what comes before it. It is different from this council, who may consider in most situations, evidence that comes to them from constituents, evidence that comes to them from outside sources, if they are getting feedback from citizens, those types of things. When you are making your decisions, you're making them from a variety of different sources of information that have been gathered. The board is not allowed to do that. They must make decisions based on the information that is presented to them at the time that the hearing is being held. The other piece of this is to ensure that we are aware that this is statutory in case law language that has been incorporated into the statute, that is in line with a quasi-judicial body making those determinations. And so we just wanted to highlight that tonight as we go into any discussions that might need to be held. The other piece that I will say is that, based on some feedback that I've gotten from several council members, we felt it might be prudent to incorporate that quasi-judicial language into the proposed rules at some point, just to make sure that we are clear what the quasi-judicial requirements are and how the board will operate in the appeals process going forward.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Clark?
Let me just make a comment there before I do, council members. We do, we as the council, from time to time, do have a quasi-judicial issue. I would say they come up about once a year, although maybe not quite that often. And when they do, the city attorney is going to read what's just in here, that we can't discuss this with anybody, we have to base our decisions solely on the evidence in front of us, and we have to disclose any conflicts of interest, or if we discussed it with anyone prior to that. And so while these may look new and strange to you, you, we will be dealing with time to time. My friend, do you know of an example where the council would be in a quasi-judicial setting?
Yes, sir. So you're exactly right. There are certain times when the city council itself serves as a quasi-judicial board. That's during the special use permit process. And one example of that is when we have to make decisions on cell towers. That is not to be confused with the zoning process for special use, for zoning. That's a totally different beast, and we can have Mr. Murphy weigh in on that if you would like. But there are other, this is an example of a time when this board would be a quasi-judicial board and operate in that fashion. And so some of the language that we were going to add was from our presentation that we made to the Civil Service Board during its orientation. No member shall in any manner discuss any appeal with any parties to the appeal, fellow Civil Service Board members, staff, or other individuals prior to their deliberations, and they shall not participate, shall participate in or vote on any quasi-judicial matter in a manner that would violate persons' constitutional rights to an impartial decision, because that board is considered the impartial decision maker in those instances.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We'll jump now into the public hearing part of it. Again, those that are speaking in favor of the Civil Service Board rules, as they presented them, would have 15 minutes. And then those that would be speaking in favor of the staff recommended rules would have 15 minutes. So on the CSB rules side, Mr. Brent Moyer has signed up. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. A little better? All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Brett Moyer. I live at 411 South Marshall. I'm one of the Civil Service Board members, so as you might guess, I'm here to speak in favor of the rules that we adopted and presented to you all. I appreciate the city attorney and her office taking the time to go through and revise some things. However, most of them, as you see in, in her proposal, in the blue highlight, are honestly more directed at the Civil Service Board itself, rather than at a variety of the rules or recommendations that she, she did include. I do appreciate some of the changes. If I'm understanding correctly, it does look like, highlighted in yellow, that we've gone back to the state statute on the city attorney's office as attorney or counselor for the board. Am I correct, or am I misunderstanding that? Misunderstanding it. So it's pretty clear to me that in the state law, which you can read verbatim, you all don't need me to read that out loud, it requires, in writing, signed by no fewer than four members of the Civil Service Board, four signatures because of the conflict of interest involving the city attorney's office as our attorney or counselor. So in the absence of four signatures from members of the CSB, the city attorney's office cannot be. And the legislature used the language of conflict of interest, which I think we would all recognize. Imagine if you were a city employee who'd just been terminated, and you come to your hearing before the CSB, and in the rules, certainly the city is the prosecuting attorney effectively. Imagine if that office was also advising the board. How would that impact you? How fairly would you feel you've been treated? Is that what we want for our city? And is it what the state law mandates? I think that's an important thing to think through. Is that really what we want and who we want to be in treating the employees fairly, making sure that the city is treated fairly, and certainly ultimately, the citizens of the city? So I would urge you certainly to adopt that portion of the CSB rules. There is initially, and hopefully some of you saw what I sent out, but in the initial where we're defining things, which are important, this is a bit more of a technical thing. If we do define terms as those in the city handbook, that city handbook can change over time. I'm sure it has, Mr. Mayor, in the years that you've been here. And as I understand it, the city manager's office is in charge of that, along with, I'm sure, the human resources department. We may just want to clarify, which city handbook definition are we using? Because if we're using the present definition, great. Everyone knows what that is, what it means, and we can use that in our hearings. But if those definitions can change without the approval of the council, then suddenly we have a brand-new definition. Those definitions can only come from you. Certainly, we can have some input, but in the end, the city council is responsible for what those definitions are in the rules of the CSB. So while it is a bit of a technical point, I think some clarification would be better so that everyone, the city, the employee, members of the CSB, know exactly what's going on and what our definitions are, and at any given point in time. Feel forgive me, I'm, I'm trying to cut down on the paper and using the phone here to get a few other points that I wanted to run through, but I assure you, I won't take all 15 minutes. The, the, as far as the rules on CSB membership and the removal of someone who is on the board, I do appreciate the city attorney's office adding in, I think some of this may be rules that there are excused absences and so forth for members of the CSB. The rules are very clear on how a member of the CSB can be removed. It spells out that if you were elected by the police employees, you can be removed by the police employees. Same thing for fire. Of course, the city council can remove their CSB-appointed member at any given point in time and so forth. So having specific rules for removal indicates those are the rules for removal. I understand the desire to make this board kind of look more like all of the other boards that the city has, but in fact, to my knowledge anyway, this is the only one created by the legislature. It is different. It deals with, yes, police and fire employees, most of which are either sworn law enforcement or certified firefighters, which I think most of you, I think all of you probably recognize the work they do is extremely different from many others. That doesn't mean better. All good, hard work done well is honorable and noble work. But the nature of what they do is very different. I think that's why there are boards throughout the state that are similar to the board that we have here. It's why the legislature created a board here for Winston-Salem and again in Greensboro. So those rules are, are there. And I would also urge you to consider the calendar. Much of the calendar is completely out of the control of the board. We set our meetings. We're going to set our annual schedule, okay? But once an employee has gone through the grievance process, right, or any process provided by the city, if they want to appeal to the board and it's a proper, you know, it's a proper, properly done, there's a timeframe that happens. We don't have a lot of control. We can make some changes. There is a little bit of wiggle room if it needs to be put off. I am hopeful that we don't have any hearings. I would love to not have a single one, but we know that's not going to be the case. There could be a situation just where a member of the CSB is ill, out for some period of time, for whatever the reason may be, and we could have paper drop into the city clerk's office for five hearings. They all have to happen within a prescribed timeframe. So it could be difficult where one member of the CSB, because they're ill or what have you, misses a number of meetings, and suddenly they're removed from the board over a calendar they can't really control. So it is a little bit different in that regard. So that's really all I have that I wanted to bring to your attention. I hope that you all did take the time to read what I did send out. I appreciate the thought and the care that you're putting into this. We on the board worked hard. We spent many hours figuring it, figuring this out. We're a representative group from Winston-Salem, some with prior law enforcement experience, EMT firefighter, business, a leader, our chairman, a leader at a local church. So we come from a lot of different backgrounds, yet on the most substantive rules that the city attorney's office is recommending changes to, those highlighted in yellow, we could certainly check with the clerk's office, but the vote on our rules were near unanimous. And so I would urge you to continue to do your due diligence, and certainly to enact the rules as recommended to you by the Civil Service Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Does anyone else want to be heard on the CSB rules? All right, seeing no one, there was no one signed up on the other side. I might ask the city attorney if she might comment.
If I might, Mayor Jones. Thank you very much again. Good evening to the council. I just wanted to provide a bit of clarity to a few of the statements that Mr. Moyer made at the podium. The first being that he is correct. We have done a lot of work. It has not just been the board, it has been staff in conjunction with that board. And we have put in a lot of time going back through and combing through the statute, as well as our city ordinances and provisions, to ensure compliance. The key here is to make sure that we are compliant across the board with both our statutory guidance, as well as our city ordinances and our city personnel resolution, handbook, all of those things. He is correct that the proposed rules were pretty much unanimous, but unanimity does not mean statutory compliance. And that is our job to ensure that we are protecting the city's interests and making sure that we are in guidance, in, in compliance with those guidelines. The first thing I will highlight is, and I'll apologize to Mr. Moyer because he is correct, I do want to go back and say that one of the provisions that he raised with respect to the city attorney's office representing the board, again, we have gone through this a couple of times, and we went through this once when we did the special meeting, but we wanted to make sure that you understood that the proposed rules with the legal revisions have the representation language that is verbatim from the statute. It does say that the city attorney shall represent, but there is the provision that they may vote, if they desire, to find someone else to represent the board. That is their right. They do have the authority to do that. They also have a budget with which to operate in that way. We have already put that to the side in anticipation. So I just, I wanted you to understand that that is already built into the statute, and we went ahead and accepted and adopted that into the proposed revisions so that we were in compliance with the statute as it's currently written. I want to go back to now the top of some of Mr. Moyer's concerns with respect to the definitions. We did highlight one, two, three, four definitions with respect to that, and I understand that the concern that, and the pushback on that is that there are, they're being defined by employee handbook. The problem we had here was that the statute was silent as to the definitions of these highlighted provisions. What that means is if there is no definition in the statute, we have to fall back on what our city ordinance provides in terms of guidance and defined terms that are most closely aligned with what the statute has. So for example, in our city ordinance, Article 3, Section 2-310, .29, Section 3, it says, "The above-listed personnel actions shall be defined and interpreted consistent with the city's personnel resolution and other city council-adopted or authorized policies and procedures, the employee handbook, and the administrative policies and procedures issued by the city manager, the police, and fire departments." So it's, it's, it's important to recognize here that, yes, our employee handbook definitions can change. If that is the case, we would then come back and ensure that these definitions line up with any changes that were made. We do that all the time across our ordinances. Whenever we make changes in one area, we go back and make those changes somewhere else. And I think it's also important to indicate that we had to make these terms consistent across our own internal policies, and we did that by using the definitions that we have in our employee handbook as listed. Another place that I think that was concerned was about the attendance of the board members. Yes, we feel that this board is still governed by the ordinance that the city has put in place with respect to attendance of its board members. There are statutory guidelines about removal, but there still should be an attendance requirement, otherwise why are we serving in this capacity? There is a 65% requirement, but that 65% is also offset by the There is a 65% requirement, but that 65% is also offset by the excused, three excuse absences that you all put into place earlier this year. And we felt that in order to provide clarity for that, we can go back and add that language so that it is clear that the board still has, members of the board still have, the opportunity to miss board meetings, three excuse absences, which include illness, funerals, medical-related absences, births or adoptions of children, military service, and professional work-related or family activities. All of our boards and commissions adhere to these same policies, and I think it is imperative that we make sure that this board also adheres to that. We are happy to include those provisions in the proposed rules so that they can be highlighted and seen clearly. The other portion is, I think, concern about language in the statute with respect to the grievance process and hearing matters prior to it coming to the board. I was glad to hear Mr. Moore you indicate that he does understand that that is the actual process. It must go through our internal appeals process before it gets to the civil service board, and so we want to just make sure and highlight that as well. And then one final thing I wanted to indicate is, in terms of making sure that we are hearing matters in terms of the proper review and that sort of thing, I think it's imperative to outline too that the ability of the CSB to hear appeals hearings is just one function of the board. The proposed rules, which you are here to talk about and deliberate over tonight, one of the reasons that we wanted to make sure that we put in about going back to the city manager's level is that we feel that that is only fair and is also in keeping with the quasi-judicial nature of the board. However, again, with respect to feedback that we received since the meeting, we recognized that there were concerns about a delay of time of getting back to take care of the employees' needs. And so one of the things we thought it might be imperative to include would be a timeframe for the city manager to hear those matters if it's returned back. And so we said maybe three business days from the time that new evidence is presented, that the city manager must review that information and then make a determination as to whether the appeal that is being heard will continue to be upheld or will be overturned. I have, I welcome any questions that you might have on any of these. I just wanted to highlight a few sections that had been deliberated and it had come to me for question so I could provide clarity on the record. But again, I feel that at this point, we are at a place where we have done the due diligence to ensure that we have lined up these proposed rules in as much clarity and closeness to the statutory guidance as possible while also making sure that we are consistent across our internal policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney French. Trying to decide here, we're a little bit of a situation, this is a public hearing, and City Attorney French was kind of speaking, clearing out some things there. My inclination is to go back to Mr. Moore. You would have three minutes for rebuttal if you'd like to add anything back in that, and then we'll come back and see if it's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On the definitions, I mean, we can go round and round on the definitions, but the moment they're changed in the city handbook, they're changed in the civil service board's rules, which would not have been approved by the city council. I don't know how that happens, right? Only the council has the authority to change those definitions. So either we should use different definitions, perhaps those used in labor law in North Carolina because North Carolina law does define suspended and discharge some of the terms. We could go with the common rules and law that are used all around North Carolina courts. But if we're going to use the handbook, we've got to define this handbook whenever it was done, right? And then if it needs to be amended for a variety of reasons, it would go through the standard process with the city manager, then it would come to this board, right? Because not until this board speaks does it matter. So that's, you know, our view on definitions. Let's either use what's in North Carolina law already, not in the CSB law, but in the law, in North Carolina law itself, or let's define the handbook we're using, which iteration of it. I do want to thank, you know, the city attorney and the city manager. City manager, I know you're busy, but 72 hours, that's a big commitment. And what I want to make sure, and I think we would all want to avoid, is the ping-pong match. New information is brought up, it's stopped, it's thrown to the city manager, the clock, he's on the clock, right? The clock starts ticking, he's got 72 hours. The employee is unhappy with the decision, comes back to the CSB. If something new comes up again, we're stopping again, 72 hours on the clock. At what point does the employee, does the city deserve resolution? And that back and forth will not allow for that type of resolution. As I've said before, we are not like an appellate court. In an appellate court, they review the file, make sure it complied with the law, then send if they, you know, they either uphold it or they'll send it back to a lower court. The appellate courts do not have rules of evidence. They are not subpoenaing documents or witnesses. They are not compelling witness testimony. If you go to the North Carolina Court of Appeals, you are not going to hear from a witness in the case. But in the CSB, you will hear that, or the CSB will hear that, right? We will hear testimony. We will review evidence. That is unique. That is a hearing. It is not an appeal. So, Mr. Mayor, I thank you, members of the council, I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. All right, go ahead, Ms., Madam Attorney.
Just two things. One, I don't think that is an accurate grasp of how appeals court, appellate courts work, but the civil service board is a board of appeal. It is not a board of first, to hear the matter first. I think we've clarified that. The other piece that I wanted to highlight here is with respect to the ping-pong that Mr. Moore referred to. There shouldn't really even be, that shouldn't even be a piece that, this is not a gotcha moment. This is not a smoking gun moment. This is not a situation where some brand-new evidence should just pop out of the blue every time we have a review of this matter. The file and is the file. Again, this goes back to us saying that there should, all the evidence and all of the information that this board would be reviewing has already been reviewed. If it is something that significant that it would require it to be returned to the manager's level, then in my opinion, that should have been introduced in the beginning. If you had a smoking gun witness, that person should have been at your grievance hearing so that the department and the manager could make the proper determination from the beginning. If it is that important, it would be crazy to me that someone would find five new pieces of evidence that they didn't have prior to filing a grievance and having it heard. I just don't think that that is the case. I will say again what I've said all along is that our fire and police department is doing a phenomenal job of ensuring that things are very tight before they go through the grievance process to get to this level. And so I find that, I personally believe that there are not going to be that many matters that are going to be overturned by the board because of the work that they do at the department level. So I will say that. The other piece I will say is that we did not make up these definitions out of a vacuum. We did not Google these definitions for the employee handbook. These are well-thought-out and crafted, pulled from case law and statutory guidance for those definitions to be in the handbook. And again, anything that is crafted with respect to the personnel resolution or any ordinance changes, those will follow the appropriate course of action as we always do to bring it back before the board, and then those matters will be updated accordingly. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. French. Well, I'm going to close the public hearing. If there are questions that our council has regarding this, certainly the city attorney is available for that, but Councilmember Clark.
I'd like to make comments.
Yes, certainly.
Mr. Moore, there is another board that does have police officers on it that are elected by their fellow police officers and retirees, and that's the retirement board, police retirement board, which I sit on. There is an attendance requirement. We meet quarterly, but if we do miss a meeting, you are able to get excused. And I will tell you, based on the definition, the reason you missed it is, the reason is your excuse. Could be you were on vacation, you were sick, whatever. I have not found that to be an impediment. I will say, I think your comment is valid in the sense that there may be some unscheduled meetings, and I'm going to think about that, is maybe it needs to be more than three. But I just want you to understand, there are folks that are elected by the police officers, and if they don't attend the meetings, they're off. Same thing with me. The other comment I would make to you as a board member is that you need to build in some downtime. Don't schedule 12 monthly meetings because you will have conflicts. I would suggest maybe, like we do here, we do not meet in July and we cut out a meeting in December. Give your board members time that if they do want to go to the beach, they don't have to miss a meeting to do it, or maybe you pick three or four months. Do what Washington does, they're at a session every other day, it seems like. But anyway, I just recommend that to you, eight to 10 meetings a month. I happen to serve on a bank board, we meet eight times a year, is more than enough time because those meetings will not be the hearing meetings, you'll schedule those separately. And that gives everybody time to do things so they don't have to. The other comment I would make has to do with these definitions. Not only did the city attorney use the handbook as her source, to me, it is absolutely imperative that the rules and definitions in our handbook match the rules here. The analogy I gave to the city attorney this morning is you're driving down the road and there's a speed limit sign that says 35 miles an hour, and right beside it is another sign that says 45 miles an hour. What are you supposed to drive? We cannot have personnel policy manual that's in disagreement with here because then you're asked, what do we judge the person by? Requirements A or requirements B. They must be in unison. Now, your point also is valid if we were to update them, and I don't know how often we update those type things. We do need a mechanism in place that they're updated here as well. But to me, it's absolutely imperative that the two are the same because if not, then you're going to have a mess when somebody says, and I also use the analogy, if one says you got to wear red pants and one says you got to wear blue pants, what pants do you wear to the meeting? And that may sound ridiculous, but if you got a conflict, that's going to be the problem. Well, I follow rule A. Well, but how about, we got you, we got to catch 22, there's a rule B here. So I would say to the city attorney, city manager, we probably need some mechanism to be sure they're in compliance there. And that's enough for the.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Clark. We're not going to vote on this tonight. This will come back to the council, probably January when it comes up. So thank you all very much. Did you have a comment, Councilmember Hall?
I did. I actually was going to try to get us to vote on it, but I do have some questions if we're not voting on it in a comment, if that's okay.
You're going to ask questions tonight?
Well, or, well, or a comment based off of what we just heard with.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Clark. I do appreciate the, I guess, clarity that the city attorney gave on a lot of these. I had a few of the questions that were lined up that you were able to explain, Attorney French, but in, I think it is F5, that was one thing that I don't think that we may have mentioned, but I think that was F5, and I think that was a concern about protecting personnel for some matter like that that may come up. And I wanted to make sure that that was highlighted because that was a revision so that any other personnel or, you know, that may come up, whether it's intended or not, that there is some sort of protection that we have in these rules that does protect them.
Yes. Would you like me to address that very quickly or you just want to make that comment?
No, I just wanted to make sure that that was highlighted.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. All right, we'll move now on to item G10, which we need a motion to excuse Councilmember Recipio from voting on this item.
So moved.
Thank you. Second, Councilmember Taylor moves to excuse Councilmember Recipio. Second by Councilmember Clark, all those in favor of excusing Councilmember Recipio, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. And Councilmember Recipio, of course, votes yes. So now we'll go to the item G11.
Item G11, resolution authorizing acquisition of easements by deed or condemnation for the Barbara Jane sidewalk project.
And this would typically come from the Public Works Committee again, so I'd recognize the chairman of the Public Works Committee, Councilmember Burke.
Don't have a.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I move for the approval of item G10. Second.
Second, in discussion. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Joints. I did have a question for staff about this, and this was, thank you, I realized this fell. This was in particular about whether or not folks on Barbara Jane Avenue had received any sort of outreach or letter or how the conversations went with residents on Barbara Jane about the improvements for the easement. I don't know who can.
Mr. King.
Or.
ACM King.
Okay, ACM King, thank you.
Yep, so, Councilmember Hall, the way this would work is typically, NCDOT has to approve the appraisal amounts, they've done that. The second step is for city council to approve the amounts contained within the item tonight. And if that's done, then the next step will be for real estate to start reaching out to the 10 individuals on here to start talking about the amounts approved within. And if they have questions about those amounts, staff is ready to answer those questions about how those amounts were derived at.
Okay, so it requires our action tonight, and then the outreach will start with them. Okay, and then I have one other question, Mayor Joints. Based off of the appraisals that DOT did, I see them here in what we have on our iPads that was listed in the packet that we had, do you know ACM King, whether or not these appraisals were done off of the recent tax evaluation or maybe a previous one? Because I wasn't able to find exactly when the appraisal was done, so I don't know if it was this year, off of this year's tax evaluations or not, valuations or not in that area.
I don't know the answer to that question, Councilmember Hall, but typically, I would say when these appraisers are looking at these, certainly tax value is a consideration, but they're also looking at prior sales to establish some of those values, just like you do in the appraisal itself. So I'm glad to reach out and ask appraiser when that was done. I can follow up with you on that.
Thank you. Are you?
All right, thank you. Councilmember Turner?
Mayor, I actually have a correction. It is item G11 that we're voting on.
Okay.
And Councilmember Burke said 10.
Oh, okay, G11, yeah. There was an update on the numbers there.
Say it again.
You accept that?
I accept that, and I move for the approval of item G11.
Thank you.
Nice second.
And Councilmember Joints, second. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. And that is unanimous. Thank you so much. We'll now go to our.
Mayor Joints, on item G8, the public hearing for the civil service board hearing, can we have a motion for the date that it'll come back in January for the record?
Somebody want to help me with that date?
January 5th.
January 5th, all right. Motion on that?
No, wait a minute, you may want to have that come back to your committee of the whole meeting in January first so that you can, I think the issue is you want to have, we need to know what resolution you want put on the agenda for you to adopt.
So that would be January the?
So if it comes back to committee of the whole.
January 12th.
Well, I'm trying to get to it.
January 12th.
January 12th.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to refer this item to the committee of the whole for the January 12th meeting.
So moved.
Second. Second by, who made the motion? Oh, Councilmember Joints made the motion. Councilmember Clark, seconded, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no.
No.
Oh, excuse me, Councilmember Hall votes no. All right. So now we'll go to our public comment period, which is the time that city council and I invite citizens to address us on matters that are germane to city government. And when this public comment period is called, persons within the council chamber will be given three minutes to make presentations to us. They should be items that are pertinent to city government, and the city council will likely not respond to issues that are brought up, but may address them at a later time or ask staff to follow up if necessary. We do ask our speakers to. We do ask our speakers to be courteous in their language and presentation. Insults, profanity, and use of vulgar language or such gestures or inappropriate behaviors are certainly discouraged. Engaging in such conduct may result in a forfeiture of any remaining speaking time, and individuals who continue to engage in such egregious behavior after being told to cease may be instructed to leave the meeting. Speakers may use certainly other avenues that are available to them to address personnel issues, litigation, and confidential matters. So we have five individuals signed up. First one is Keenan Attic. Again, state your address for the record, please, as you come forward.
Yes, this is Keenan Altic. My address is 413 Granville Drive, 27101, Winston-Salem. I have comments on housing and wastewater treatment for electric generation, but before that, I need to address funding, because I know that effectively that is what is going to come up. We have problems with getting funding from federal or state level for anything. We're stuck here with property taxes. We have problems with not being, every time that comes up, we say we're not going to raise taxes there. We, in the state of North Carolina, we can't do graduated property taxes. But I want to say that this council, along with the county commission, are members of Greater Winston-Salem Incorporated, right, which it lobbies on the state legislative agenda in Raleigh. So that makes what happens in the state legislature relevant to this council. I'm sure this council is aware that Greater Winston-Salem Incorporated has supported the phase-out of corporate tax in North Carolina. Earlier this year, Governor Josh Stein was an honored guest at Greater Winston-Salem State of the Economy Address at the Benton Convention Center, in which he had, he and members of his council all graduated, all congratulated, he and the members of this council, all congratulated one another on their shared agenda. The local Democrats here would have the people believe they are restricted by the state legislature, but the fact is, you all join in the same agenda as Republicans and have moved to the right of Ronald Reagan in embracing trickle-down entrepreneurs, exploiting the value from the work everyone else is hired to do. Seventy-seven percent of North Carolina opposes corporate tax phase-out. But this council are members of the chamber that got number one, was ranked number one in the country of Chamber of Commerce's. This is the reason every policy that comes forward in practice is such that affordability cannot be achieved. Many claim the Peters Creek Initiative Housing with Shalom Project is a good example of affordable housing. It uses the same Lytech policies that have not worked in Raleigh, Charlotte, and on and on. Rent cap is not assigned proportional to a particular household income, which means the Peters Creek Housing will only be capped at $900. Everyone saying they support housing should be affordable, but they aren't telling you what the policy actually means. In the consent agenda, there was a housing item making very general statements in support of access to affordable housing, but I still see nothing defining what affordable really I just want to get to it, to the point. $300 is all that my maintenance is at the home I own, over time, every month. That's what it amounts to over time.
Thank you very much, sir. Anne Gauthreau, if I pronounced that wrong, excuse me for getting you wrong there.
Very close, thank you. Yeah, I just, I'm Anne Gauthreau, and I live at One Park Vista, downtown Winston-Salem.
Move back a little closer.
Is that better? So yes, thank you, mayor and council members, for this opportunity to speak. I know that the noise ordinance issue is in front of us all. I do want to say thanks to everyone that was involved in that noise testing at the amphitheater, that was great. I especially want to thank our councilwoman Regina Hall for giving us a heads-up about that and an opportunity to give you feedback, so thank you for that. For many of us who choose to live in downtown Winston-Salem, we expect a lot of noise and activity, and that's part of the appeal of living downtown. However, for many of us, especially those of us that live along Fourth Street and Trade, and I'm sure there's other pockets, the noise levels are often hard to live with. There are too many instances of bars and vehicles having no regard to the existing ordinances, so I'm particularly glad you're revisiting these. This is particularly true of the vehicles that have been specifically modified to create excessive noise. These are the vehicles that are cruising up and down Fourth Street and other areas of downtown, leaving the larger community of business owners, especially restaurants with outdoor seating, and residents frustrated. In fact, I was talking with one restaurant owner today, and I quote, she said, "We definitely have sound issues with cruisers for the outdoor seating. It's so jarring and painful to hear." Many cities have ordinances that curb this by setting decibel levels for bars and vehicles, and some cities also have a no cruising zone in their downtowns. As you focus on amending the downtown noise ordinances, we ask that you include bars with outside speakers, as well as excessively loud vehicles and motorcycles. These intrusive noise levels make the street environment feel more hostile rather than welcoming, undermining efforts to attract people to live, shop, dine, and spend time downtown. There is technology such as noise cameras and electronic ticketing available that could help enforce new ordinances by capturing data needed to support ticketing and fining violators. Fourth Street and core downtown areas could be designated as areas to pilot a noise camera program, focusing on locations with the heaviest concentration of loud vehicles and documented complaints. It would be ideal to have a system in place by spring, when people really want to enjoy being outdoors, dining outside, coming to Winston-Salem for conventions and concerts, and enjoying the overall quality of life in the city. So thank you for your attention, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Chris Jones.
Good evening, Chris Jones. I live at 400 West Fourth Street on, right on Fourth Street. I first want to say, this is an incredible city, and we, having traveled quite a bit in the United States, even abroad, I think anybody who would visit downtown Winston-Salem would look at the architecture and the environment and the cohesiveness of it, the density, and they would say, wow, this is an exceptional. And I think Winston-Salem is in a position, as we recruit businesses, we recruit people, this is a true asset. It really is. In my opinion, the city is losing control of downtown, that atmosphere. It's becoming unpleasant. Fourth Street has become the new strip in Winston-Salem, where motorcycles do wheelies down the middle of the road in broad daylight. Loud music is blasted from automobiles in all hours of the day, but particularly in the evening and into the late hours. In general, noise ordinances are not adhered to by the local bars. Doors and windows are left open by these bars. They blast their music outside into the wee hours of the night for the entire downtown to hear. It's unpleasant. There you have a disregard for all of the patrons, anybody's quiet enjoyment of our wonderful downtown. It's for everybody, not just certain people. Drunken and disorderly behavior by pedestrians also goes on throughout the evening and night. It creates an intimidating and disrespectful atmosphere. Occasionally, fights break out, and while rare, we see and hear gunshots and other violence. I grew up in Winston-Salem, I knew what it was like here 30, 40, 50 years ago. It was dead. It was amazing. I moved back here in 1997. This city has come back, it came back to life, and it is absolutely wonderful. We've got Wake Forest that is embracing this city. There are tremendous other schools in Salem College and Carolina Uni, all the other ones too, I don't want to say Winston-Salem State. But we were drawing them to downtown Winston-Salem. We have a development going on by the Coliseum. We can grow with that development at the Coliseum, or we can grow against it. And if we don't pay attention to what's going to hap, what's happening in downtown Winston-Salem, it's going to suck all that money away from downtown Winston-Salem, and we all lose, and the city loses a great asset. So I really think, it's not just the noise, it's what do we want our downtown to look like? We were making tremendous progress years past, let's get back to that. Thank you.
Carol Hoover.
Good evening, Mayor Joins and members of the city council. My name is Carol Hoover, and I live at 515 Archer Road. I am honored to speak to you tonight on behalf of the Bicycle Pedestrian Active Mobility Advisory Committee. Our committee is dedicated to advancing Winston-Salem's vision of a more livable and prosperous city. One where safe and accessible transportation offices, options improve the quality of life of all residents. I am here to present our committee's requests for the 2026-27 budget. These exact requests were submitted last year and closely aligned with the goals outlined in both the council-approved Bicycle Master Plan and the Forward 2045 Plan. Given the limited time for comments, I am leaving the full committee recommendations for you to review, including links to verify the information. And I will also review our top recommendations now. First, we ask for increased funding for sidewalk maintenance. Last year, the city cut funding by 10 and 1/2 percent to $684,000. The current budget does not adequately cover the maintenance of over 450 miles of sidewalks in our city. Wherever residents walk, maintenance issues are visible. It's even more challenging for those who roll. My 18-month-old granddaughter was in town, and I had to push her off of a curb around a broken-up, missing sidewalk panel filled with large rocks because the stroller wheels could not cross them. Second, we request an increase in our city's greenways and parks. While we recognize a 3.8% increase in the park maintenance budget this past year, the total remains under 3.9 million, which must cover 3,800 acres and 28 mile, of parkland and 28 miles of greenways and trails. This equates to just over $1,000 per acre for maintenance. As grandparents who live, who visit local and other North Carolina community parks, we see that our parks' maintenance standards are lower than those of other North Carolina communities. Research indicates that current budget is insufficient to maintain greenway and trails and playground equipment properly. Bike lane requests continue to grow, yet resurfacing projects are removing existing bike lanes, while peer cities are expanding their safe bicycling infrastructure. Maintenance for lighting, vegetation, crosswalks, sharrows, and other street markings is also overdue, with many areas showing significant deterioration. Failing to address these maintenance backlogs puts the city at a risk of pedestrian incidents and comprises resident safety, compromises resident safety. Our city has remarkable assets that deserve careful stewardship. Thank you for considering these budget recommendations from our committee. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoover.
Thank you.
Hannah Albertson, please.
Hi, good evening. My name's Hannah Albertson, and I live at 521 West First Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm also here to speak on the noise ordinance under development. I'm a downtown Winston-Salem resident for more than half of my life. I grew up on West Fourth Street, and I've lived for the last 12 years in the West End, downtown, and now in the Holly Hill neighborhood. I love Winston-Salem, and I want it to be the best place. I want it to continue to be a place where I want to live downtown. At Christmas time, my gift to my mother, who lives in a condo right on Fourth Street, is to spend two weeks with her. So even though I already live downtown, I move and live with her on Fourth Street for two weeks. And during that time, it's stunning to hear the noise from the automobiles that are playing, you know, loud music, the kind of modified cars that have this exhaust, you know, you hear that at all hours. There's bars and bar patrons that don't really have any regard for the noise that they're creating. So part of the time that I have spent away from Winston-Salem, I spent in New York City. And there were bars in the neighborhood that said, you know, we live in a neighborhood, you need to be quiet, because like, this is a mutual respect zone, this is a community. And I would love to see ordinances that care for that sense of community and that sense of mutual respect. If my mom leaves her condo to me, I would love to be living right on Fourth Street. I would love to be living right in the middle of things, but I hope that the community that we have at that time is a community of mutual respect. So as you consider the contents of the ordinance, please just consider how to find that right balance. Downtown residents are not party poopers, we're not wet blankets, we're not trying to stifle the fun. We are the primary patrons of these establishments, and we also need to sleep and be able to rest and go to work. We should be able to enjoy our homes and our porches with the knowledge that our city ordinances, our city leaders, and law enforcement all support that sense of community and mutual respect that makes Winston-Salem a wonderful place to live, which is what I want to continue. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Those are all, of course, that have signed up for that. Is there anyone else like to be heard during the public comment period? All right, seeing no one, I will close the public comment period and would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Joyner, seconded by Councilwoman Clark to adjourn. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned. Councilwoman Recipio, if you have some favor.